Laura, could you take roll call?
Councilmember Bachman?
Here.
Mayor Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniek?
Here.
Roll call complete.
Study session items include public comments, discussion on strategic plan update, discussion on council policy. Public comments, do we have anybody who would like to come forward to make a comment on any agenda-related items? We'll move ahead and I'm going to pass the microphone on to Bill Gamble to start the discussion on the strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to, this was included in the packet, I think May 2020, this is the last update. A lot of the priorities have probably stayed the same, but I think I'd like to discuss with council kind of a process with updating this. I think we budgeted some funds for facilitator. I spoke with Mary Riley, she'd be interested, and I think, you know, there's quite a few things we're tackling, blight, I know we have different projects going on, service request system, housing priorities, and, you know, projects like the Banshell and TDA Streetscape coming up. So I was thinking that, you know, if council could take a look at this, I think a lot of these things are ongoing, but I think it's time to kind of prioritize which ones we kind of focus staff time on. But I just wanted to kind of open it up for discussion on some of these items. I think over the last year, we've had, you know, we had that issue with the lead. Since then, we had 40 tests that came back below the action level, so that's kind of, we had a couple of items that were, you know, more serious, that like the PFOS, we're still dealing with that issue with the landfill, so those would be added. But I just wanted to kind of get council's take on what worked with this template, or there's some other format we'd like to see. I didn't scroll through a couple.
Do you have a different format that you would like to try, or is that?
Um, I think we could, well, this one I thought kind of did have a lot of, you know, listed out the different items. I could take some of these and we could have a different format, but I think having the lead and kind of tasks as we go through them, I think that does work.
Is there anything in item, I think it's 1.11?
I will stand.
That has not been completed or touched, or is just obsolete for some reason?
Let's go back one to the... Yeah, I would think we can, I can eliminate some of the old ones. So one item that's come up is this, we have, let's see, so we have the option with these tax for closed properties, the city does get the first right of refusal. This one is on the moderate blight list, and we could consider as a pilot project, using our right of first refusal, accepting it and then demoing. We'd have to let the county know by September 9th, so this would be a new thing we try, but I just wanted to get council's take on doing something like this.
So what is that all until?
So we'd have to let them know about our, about us exercising our first right of refusal. You'd pay the back taxes on it, then we could demo, and then we'd probably dispose of, or allow someone else to build on it. So there's, there's a couple ways to do it. The last community, they'd put a new house, they'd improve the house, like by putting a new house on, they'd improve the housing stock, and then they'd sell it. So there's, there are some issues with, I think, you know, there's been a challenge legally about someone trying to get fair market value after the first right of refusal, so there's a little bit of risk, but it would be something I want to bring to council attention.
That is actually a block away from my house, and I would actually, I would like to take the risk in that district, you know, to see something happen.
And we did put aside ARPA money tentatively for housing, so that's what I was thinking about this one.
You know how much they owe in the back taxes?
It's 7,400 right now, yeah. I don't know if there's going to be additional water bills or anything, but...
Do you know if it's ever been on the market for sale?
No, it's on this auction site right now, but yeah, it's, it would go to auction on September 9th. It went, or closed. I'm not sure about the...
I think with this one, it's been hard to contact the owners. They can't get a hold of them. It's...
Yeah.
There's been like shingles and flooring on this porch for years.
You can't find them, somebody can't find them.
So the chief is aware, I think they've had blight issues, but it's an out-of-state owner, but they let it go to tax foreclosure?
I'll get ahold of you. I know the people that live there.
Yeah.
Parents that live in here in town.
Okay.
But we could find them.
Is this house currently occupied?
It's unoccupied.
So basically what I'm hearing, I'm not hearing you really well tonight, but what I'm hearing you say is that the owner had it, he let it go back to the county for back taxes, so the county currently owns it, they're lying up after you to take it from them for back taxes, and then we would either demo or rebuild something there, correct? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct, yep.
And you're asking us for what we want to do with that?
Right, if you'd be, if you'd support, yeah, us exercising our right of first refusal.
It, does it, does it need to be demolished? Because it was occupied in 2018.
That's what I was wondering, would it be more economical to, to actually do a, you know, a refurbishment rather than a complete demo?
I did have our builder, building inspector take a look. He thought it was probably a demo. He would want to take a look inside, but that is another route if they go in and you see, looking at the pictures, it didn't look that great on the inside, but that is another option.
How would we finance it if we took that and decided to build something there or rehab the house? How would you finance that? What would the potential cost be? Any idea?
Um, I think we'd do, we would use that ARPA housing fund that we, we talked about, and, you know, we'd probably have, so we'd have to get the, we'd have to, you know, pay the back taxes, we'd get it, we'd have someone do specs on the house, we'd probably have an estimate ahead of time, you know, depending if we're going to demo it or rehab it. We'd have an estimate, and we'd spend it out of that pool, and then if you sell it, then any proceeds would go back into that housing pool. That's what we did in the last community I worked in, so...
It seemed to me that we'd need, we'd need both those numbers before we can make a decision on that, that we would take the first right of refusal, seize the property, and then come back with options. Would that be what would make sense? I can't really make that decision today without having numbers, correct?
The only issue is, so usually, so, you know, this would be a pilot, we do it at this one. Yeah, it would be nice to have both numbers until we can go inside and have someone, you know, do the specs or take a really good look at it. We wouldn't have an estimate, but...
But we could make the decision just to do first right of refusal, buy it from the county for taxes, then we could make, then we'd have access to it to do...
Right.
Evaluation, whether...
Exactly, yeah, that would be the next step.
Right.
Correct, that would be the next, so first you'd decide if you want to do it, then we'd kind of have some options for council, and then we can make a decision.
Yeah, I would, I would say we should pay the taxes on it, own the property, and then make a decision how we're going to deal with that.
Okay.
That would be my view on it, and that's a 107.
Well, you're just asking for the, for, to do the right of refusal, right?
Correct.
At this point.
At this point.
And then you'll come back to us for the rest.
Yep, I think that makes sense.
I don't have a problem with it. That's the proper way to go, probably.
Okay.
You said there's a little bit of a risk. What's the risk?
Um, just that there's been some, there's been some lawsuit challenges about retroactively paying fair market value, so there's, we hadn't dealt with that in the last community I worked in. I know it's been brought up here, though.
The, the potential would be that we would put $150,000 into the home, sell it for 200, and then the difference between what we put into it and what the taxes were would actually go to the homeowner.
Oh.
Potentially.
Yeah.
But if it's a, but that's normally if you're just selling, but, you know, again, it'll be interesting to see how the lawyers look at it when you're actually going to demo and rebuild, but...
Well, it's a really interesting project, though, to look at for future properties, though. It's really interesting to think that we may have some opportunity to do this kind of stuff, because, I mean, all we talk about here is housing and housing and not having it. If we can contribute to making housing better, I don't know why we wouldn't at least investigate that and see if it makes economic sense for us. I don't know that we need to go out there and make a profit, I mean, but to turn our house around and let someone live in it.
But even if we made just a small profit, then you turn around and...
Well, yeah, exactly, you're rolling, yeah, I, yeah, right. I wouldn't want to go into a general fund, but I would want, yeah, right, to make it a revolving fund, and we can continue to go to another property, and then maybe two properties, yeah, I think that's...
There's a few properties out there that you could probably buy outright from the owner for 25 grand, and then you wouldn't have to go through all of the other...
But I think this is a great starting point.
Sure.
To how it's, you know, where it's located, and how it is right now. I think this is a good choice.
Yeah.
Is this something that Habitat would be interested in tackling?
Possibly, yeah, I think we'd, that's something we could explore at the, yeah.
Well, I, I would say, right now Habitat got all that land, and we're, we're already kind of up to our necks trying to figure out how to divide that land out to be able to build on, but they might be. You know, again, the difference with Habitat is, you know, typically, we don't build for just retail, we build for a client.
I understand that. I do understand that.
That would be, right now, I don't know that we have a client.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, so is anyone else opposed to us doing the first right of refusal on this one? Okay.
So that means that we, it won't go to auction. We have the right before...
Correct, yeah, we just have to do it before September 9th, and I'll let council know the process more about, there needs to be an action item on the next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It could be on the September meeting, but...
Can we all listen and not all talk at the same time?
So, yeah, I'll let council know about the next steps with it. Great.
Should we have somebody else besides the building inspector to go through it? My only concern is, some of those, like, you see this house over here, it sits like almost on the sidewalk, so I'm just worried about if we tear it down, how it's going to sit, remodeling-wise.
Yeah, and I think we'd, we'd have them grade it and seed it. I mean, you'd have it, make it, they're supposed to make it to a buildable lot, and it's supposed to be graded, so that it's not, you know, it's going to hurt the sidewalk.
Is there a rule that you could rebuild on the exact same footprint? If you had a house like that, if you left even a tiny bit of existing structure that you could rebuild on the same footprint rather than demo, you left like one interior wall, you could build on the same footprint. Is that not a zoning law?
Um, it depends, yeah, it depends if we take it completely down or not. I mean, we'd have to follow the setbacks of whatever existing one is.
But if you don't take it all the way down, then it becomes a remodel.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
You know, they leave one existing piece of it there, and it becomes a remodel around one window that's still sitting there, and then you rebuild on the same footprint. I know, I know people have done that in this community.
Okay. And Mayor Protem Sullivan, were you, so you're thinking a different person than our building inspector doing the specs? Was there...
Well, just a contractor or structural, somebody can just see that if the bones are good, if we can just rehab it, I mean...
Okay.
Because if the foundation's good, I mean, you can bring it down with the studs and rehab it, and it saves a lot of money.
Okay.
Ripping it off and starting up, because I don't, I don't see in this area, I mean, Aaron and I live over there, you're not going to get $200,000 for a house over there in Casillas, so it's not going to, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, that's optimistic.
And there's opportunities to maybe work with the land, land bank on this as well, so I think there's, the first step is getting, and then we'll kind of explore options and...
I think it's a great idea. I just, I, hopefully we can rehab it at some level.
And I think approaching this as kind of a, as a pilot, I think is the way we'll look at it, and I'll keep council updated on it, on options for it. So that was kind of the pressing item. As far as timing with a strategic plan update, I know we have an election coming up. We're going to at least have one new council member. I was thinking, do we do that maybe after in November, or is this something you think we do before then? If we did the facilitator, does anyone have any thoughts on that?
I'm thinking after, because that way then you'll have whoever you're going to have for at least a year.
Anyone else?
Also, though, it kind of helps drive the budget, so you've got to kind of look at your budget calendar when you can do the budget, and try to have some input on this before you put the budget together, because if we put a budget and then change all the strategic plan, it doesn't really make anybody's life better.
It's a good point, very good point.
And I think, well, you start in February, maybe March, in earnest, certainly in February, right?
Mm-hmm.
January sometime, so there might be a little room to wiggle, and then once the election's over, December, January, we might go work on that, but it definitely has to be at least some comment from council before you build your budget.
Yep, absolutely. All right, no, that's, that's helpful. Does anyone else have any comments on that? We'll choose for November, December for that, okay. And then I'll kind of go through this and scrub out all the, kind of the older things and add some new ideas, and I think, obviously, we have our goals of providing excellent service, transparency, things like that, so we'll have that reflective in there. All right.
There was a talk a couple of meetings ago about having a process for submitting a complaint or a comment. I don't know for sure if that's something that we can have it represented in a strategic plan, or...
Yeah, so we have been looking at two vendors for service requests, so you can send them through your phone, you could take a picture of an item, it'd go directly to the, to the department, so as opposed to having to go through, you know, a department head, or, you know, it would go directly to the people who actually do the work. If it doesn't get done, it would escalate, so it would be kind of a more, more efficient system to, and people wouldn't have to call, they could, so there's a couple we're meeting to kind of go over the two, I believe it's next week, to kind of go over them, and then find out, you know, if there's money in the budget and how we can, we can make that work.
All right, just wondering if that would show up somewhere on here, or...
Absolutely.
Or if that is actually something already on here, I don't know.
No, I think we'd go under technology, and we'd...
Okay.
All right, and if anyone, looking through this, if anyone has any ideas, just feel free to email me.
The one that I saw on blight is that we didn't update with the new committee. We still have the ad hoc.
Yeah, I noticed that, too.
So we don't have any of the, the new, new information outlined in it.
We also have the neighborhood restoration...
Yep.
...missions, NRVC.
So in November, are you thinking that we would take this and just update it, or are you talking about, like, developing a whole new strategic plan?
I think I'll talk to, so I'll talk to Mary Riley, tell her we're interested, and I'll, I think it would only help to kind of update some of these things, but then, yeah, I'll talk with her and see what she thinks is the best idea. Any other comments? Thank you.
Discussion on council policy. I wanted to talk about council member training requirements, and one of the reasons I want to talk about them is because I think it's just a good idea to attend training classes if you've never been an elected official, and I will also tell you, it apparently is a really good idea if you're a mayor, spend two and a half days at a mayor's conference in Michigan, which is what I did last week, and, and talk amongst ourselves and, and find out what kind of common problems we have, and, and there's some suggestions as to how to solve them. So, that being said, I would love to be able to add that newly-elected council members are strongly encouraged to attend the newly-elected officials' training that the MML offers once or twice a year. I think it's really beneficial. You don't have to pay for your lodging, because it's covered under, in our budget items for training, so you get your gas reimbursed, hotel paid for, you should, you know, when you do a conference, they've got a discount on the hotel space anyway, and it's very worthwhile. So these things come up in time to time on other subjects, too, which I think we should also be taking a look at. Any training we can get from outside sources is going to be helpful to us.
I totally agree with that. Can you talk more about how do we, like, do I just find something and then come and see if some, what...
There's a lot of...
What's the process?
MML emails that come out.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's usually where I see most of these things happening.
And just anything I'm interested in, I can...
Well, I think, W F City Manager.
There is a course that will, will start right after elections in November.
I've already been to that.
So that's the, so that's the newly-elected office.
I've been to that, but I'm just wondering about other things out there. I'm, I'm all about learning and growing, so...
In the planning, there's a lot of training from the planning side. Municipal planning has a lot of training that's available. A lot of that is free, and you can take it from home on the computer.
There's a new, there's an elected officials' academy that lasts, what, a year or two? You take courses over a long period of time, become a certified elected official as well through the league?
I think that's for planning. I know, the planning commissioners have to...
I think there's also, I think there's an elected officials' academy. I heard Jana Blensky talk a lot about, she went to it and got certified after a long period of time.
Yeah, you can accumulate so many educational credits and get it.
The league website has a lot of stuff on that.
And anything I'm interested in, or do I just talk to you about it, or...
Yeah, I can send, and I believe I sent a link to the newly-elected training early on, but I can, I can send you kind of the MML offerings and, yeah, if anyone's interested.
I know I've seen some of those, but I kind of haven't looked closely at them after.
No, I'll, I'll send you a couple of things, but if you see something, yeah, just let me know.
All right, thank you. These guys right here.
It was interesting being one of the experts on how to set up the marijuana districts. One of the 36 mayors that was there, so, and talking about short-term models, meeting the closest mayor that was there, was of course from the city of Luddington, Steve Miller, talking to him quite a bit. I thought, if it's all right, I would like to just quickly go through just some cleanup that I think we need to do on the city council guidelines' policy. There's some outdated things that I, I think we could take care of. So one of the things I was thinking of, well, number six, work sessions. The council shall regularly meet in work sessions on the second Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Since we're now sort of transitioning over to study sessions, I'm thinking that should say work/study sessions, so to give it a, make it a little bit more current. That's a, that's kind of a minor change. On item 15...
Mayor, are you the only one that has a copy of that right now?
Yeah.
Well, I have a copy for myself, yeah.
I didn't know, okay.
Light it on your eyes?
Where is it?
It's CP10, if that helps.
Under council member information, or what's the folder? What is it called?
It's labeled CP10, council guidelines policy. However, how I get to it is...
I put one up here.
There it is. In the shared folders.
Which folder, though? I didn't touch it.
Did you find it?
It's CP-10.
Which folder, though?
I didn't touch it.
It's under council policies index, and then it goes CP...
City council guidelines.
Yeah, okay, I don't know. Actually, what I want to go to is duties and privileges of members under item 20.
Oh, are they getting unmuted?
Code of Ethics. If you guys can find that.
I got it, which one?
Uh, Code of Ethics, number 20.
Okay.
This is something that I kind of stumbled into. Acceptance of solicitation of gifts, gratuities, bribes, or rewards from any person, business, or organization is prohibited. That's pretty straightforward. What I think we should add, if this makes sense to you, is having now been a member of a very active club that goes out and, and raises money for nonprofits throughout Manistee County, I honestly got on something called the sponsorship committee and realized that as a mayor, it was extremely uncomfortable to even think about asking businesses for money. It did not feel like the right thing to do, so I did not do that. But I think at this point, because I was so uncomfortable, I just wanted to talk about it, see how these guys feel, and I think maybe if we, we might want to add something in there about that. I'm just not exactly sure on how to word it.
Well, you know, when I read this, when I read acceptance or solicitation, that means that you're not allowed to solicit money, period. So I never did either in all those organizations. I always made sure that they knew that that was something that I couldn't be involved in.
So I think maybe, maybe we need to make it stronger, because when you're talking about sponsorships, you start thinking of something else, so... We can't accept gifts, and we can't, well, we can't ask for them.
Now, in the government, there is some clarifications on gifts, for example, if you're invited to a luncheon, if the luncheon is under $15 or whatever is considered to be a reasonable amount, you can accept a free lunch. There are, you know what I'm saying? There are some, just to kind of make it clear for people what you can and can't do, if, if, I don't know if we want to get that detailed or not, but the, but the Department of Defense or the government code of conduct does list specifics about gifts, for example. The gift can't, if somebody gives you one of these beautiful designer DTE pens in the book, you can accept that, but you can't accept a new one.
Your case, that would have worked out well. Actually, my solution to it, because I do gift to my club, was I bought a number of gift certificates to kind of get around the problem, but I didn't think that was, you know, somebody else who's on the sponsorship team next year has to realize that they actually have to knock on doors and then ask. So that was one thing I, I stumbled on. And now on number 22, where it comes to appointments. Okay, number 22, by ordinance, the mayor is a member of the Downtown Development Authority and the chair of the Oil and Gas Board. The mayor becomes a member of the Sands Park Board. The mayor becomes a member of the Sands Park Board. Here, we have already deviated from that in the past. Uh, when Roger Zielinski was mayor, he asked Thad Taylor to serve in his place on the downtown, on the DDA, and that was approved by council. So, I do think we need to make a change here, um, on that. And also, the mayor becomes a member of the Sands Park Board. Now, when I was making assignments this past year in November, I asked everybody what, excuse me?
I, I was looking at 22, and I don't see anywhere where it says Sands Park on there, so I don't know if I'm looking at something different than what you are.
Item 22?
Yeah, item 22. It's the same thing about Sands Park. Development Authority and Chair of the Oil and Gas Investments.
I'm using.
So, it got taken off there?
Maybe. This might be an old copy or something. So, anyway, we still have to change it so that we know that the, um, city manager is serving on the DDA board, which I think is a better fit than a mayor's position. Um, you're in a better position to tell them everything that's going on and get things done for them. So, um, I think that's a change we need to make in our guidelines.
Were you thinking the mayor is a better person, or that?
Yes, that's what it has to-
Well, we just agreed when Roger appointed Thad. We just agreed with that. Now, we're going to change it around and, and agree with it?
Well, it's been serving for, since September when he started here on the-
It was approved. It was approved by the board.
It was approved by-
But part of us dissented on it too.
What would be the reason not to versus the reason to? Just-
Not to, because if the mayor's appointed to it, who leaves it out?
I think that, I honestly think the city manager is a better fit for it. I think the city manager's a better fit, just because we keep switching mayors so many times that it's-
I understand. He's involved with the, with the committees and all that, so he knows a lot more than we do.
He usually tells us what's going on, so if he were-
And he works for the council.
But I'm just saying, we objected at that time, so.
Some of you may have objected, but we did pass it to the-
What?
Thad Taylor.
When was it passed?
Sometime, when Roger first became mayor, he was very nervous because he did not want to serve on the DDA board. He thought that Thad Taylor should be a better, or a better person to represent the city on the DDA board. So, we'd have to go back wide ways.
So, this is not just a policy, it's an ordinance would have to be changed, correct? It says by ordinance, the mayor is a member of the Downtown Development Authority.
But the ordinance was changed. They just didn't change-
We didn't change-
So, this isn't relevant to the current-
The ordinance does-
This should reflect what the ordinance has, correct?
The ordinance-
The ordinance says-
But that Trumps does, doesn't it?
The ordinance does, right. This, it was just paperwork catching up.
These are guidelines.
And Mayor, it looks like the 122 that I have up here does say the city manager is a member of the Downtown Development Authority. So, I'm wondering if you're working off an older copy.
Well, I, I think this one still has the, the, uh, mayor sitting on the board. Under the ordinance, I thought he was replaced, or she was replaced, by the city manager, and not having two seats.
Right. That's, that's-
I don't think you have two seats on the board, one or the other.
Oh, okay.
And I'm pretty sure if we, well, we could look, but I think the ordinance was changed. They probably just missed this when they were-
Maybe.
Prior to that change, was the city manager going to him anyway? So, was it?
No.
No. So, the city manager wasn't going at all?
No, they wouldn't allow him in because that wasn't part of the ordinance.
Okay.
So, were we all on board with, um, having a council policy on that requirement for attending a newly elected official class? Just because we can kind of clean up some of these with that if we're going to do.
What do you guys think?
I don't think so.
I think making it recommended is certainly within reason to-
I agree.
Did you say requiring it or recommending it?
Yeah, which one would, which one does come?
Requiring it.
Okay.
I think you use highly recommended. I think you start requiring it, then you got, I mean-
Yeah, it's what are you going to do if you're-
Yeah, you might have to be working.
Yeah.
You know? I think highly recommended, if you get to it.
That's, that's how I want, wanted it.
That's what I heard, yeah.
Yeah. It is really very beneficial.
And then the, yeah, the Code of Ethics, we'll talk about that. Number 20 with, you know, soliciting gifts for oneself or on behalf of an organization, we could put that clarification in there.
Yeah, that would help clean it up a lot.
And then we'll check on this 22 about the, other, the way I'm reading this, it looks like it's stating the city manager is a member of the DDA, but, so.
And that's how it's in here. Oh, on 22. So, whatever this is versus what you have there is the same.
Okay. Okay, so we'll check on that.
Very least, it's got to be consistent.
There's another couple of things that I, I'm thinking that we might want to add, or if you guys agree with me. Um, I think it's really helpful if council members know that they're going to be absent if they notify the manager and the mayor, um, so that we know a few days in advance or something, unless it's an absolute emergency. It's, it's just good to know.
I didn't hear what you, what, what is, what is good to know?
Good to know if you're going to be absent from a meeting.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah.
So. And the last thing I wanted to open up for discussion on, on council procedure was we, we have in section 28, I'm going to make sure if I read this right, we have our order of business. Right after the consent agenda, what I've noticed, the planning commission has already gone ahead and done this. They have a, an item called conflict of interest. At this time, the chair will ask if any member has any conflicts of interest on the approved agenda. Aaron, I know that you have always told us, you know, but I thought if, it's more appropriate if we actually had an agenda, so we're not stumbling around. So, and the planning commission already thought about that too. So, it would be good to have that, right after the approval of the agenda.
I have anybody been, I thought everybody's been doing good on that.
Well, I'm just trying to see if we can be consistent, reminding people. The planning commission does it for their needs. It's not a bad policy. In fact, we talked about it at the mayor's conference, so I don't have a problem with that.
It's really hard being a small town and being involved in a lot of stuff. What isn't a conflict and what's not.
And that's why, you know, before-
That's why sir-
I always ask Mr. Saylor, if there's anything that I'm, that comes up that looks like it might be, and he usually will, then publicly give you advice whether or not you should or shouldn't vote.
It is fairly routine in a lot of committees on their, on their agendas.
I think it's a good idea, just because then it triggers it for you if you think that there's something that you should be wondering about.
That's all I really had, so.
Well, thanks for looking through that for us. Getting our ducks in a row.
All right. Are there any others? Under other, one of them.
I had a few. Have we started up the new sewer system? The stylo stuff?
Not, not just yet. It's, I think the connections, um, I think in the next two weeks it should be up. So, it's not-
And then have we started using the new door hangers for the brush pickup?
Yeah. DPW has been going around doing that.
We had any feedback?
Um, I think there were a couple of people surprised to see someone on their porch from what Jeff was telling me, but, um, yeah, I think it's been positive for the most part.
I'm, I'm kind of upset again. Bill, why are we giving George Newery another October to October? This is getting ridiculous. 20 years of this stuff, and we're still at the same point. I mean, how much work are they doing that we're even considering giving him another break?
We aren't giving him another break.
No, it works. I understand that. But the thing is, I think we should be fighting this out in court. Bring it up that, hey Judge, this thing's been going on 20 some years. Now, I mean, they put up scaffolding, take it down, put it up, take it down, and nothing is done. You know, what is getting done inside? Did they tell me a hundred thousand that they've put into the place already? You know? But we've been fighting this five years now. I think we're just going, no wonder the town don't progress. We keep sitting at the same spot we're at.
And that was, you know, we had the court order about it being completed by a certain date. It had to go back in front of the judge. I did send a counsel what happened to George's statement about what happened, so he had Judge Brenner to delay the decision till October, so. It really does come down to they made their case to the judge. Our city attorney made the case to the judge, and that was the determination.
But the judge asked to give, give him time to ride through town, to see what they're doing, and he came after lunch and he said, well, I give him to October. But the thing is, I think we should be arguing from the city's point, this is 20 years, Judge, what more do you want?
And I believe George, I did, I do believe George made that argument, but ultimately-
You know you don't do that. You just say, yes, sir, just your honor, and you wait till October.
But we've been in court. We've been in court a lot of times, and we argue these things.
Judge doesn't see this as a critical issue for the court.
Well, he doesn't see the visitors coming in and complaining.
I, I understand. His, his view is a different view than yours or mine. You know, we got to wait till October.
I just don't see it.
Frustrating it is, you got to wait till October.
Reminds me of not even taking, bring up the issue. If this goes on for 20 years. What's the thing with the screws and nails in the police car tires building?
Um, yeah, I just, I think the police are looking into that. I, you know, I thought maybe it was a coincidence, but it happened a little bit too often, and now, yeah, chief's kind of making sure that that's not, uh, done on purpose.
We saw cameras on, on the front of the building, the oil and park cars. Do we have cameras on the cars that are parked anywhere?
Yeah, so they parked them in a different spot, I believe, for, for that reason. But, yeah, we don't have, we didn't have cameras in a certain area.
And do we have cameras on them now?
I can verify that. I don't know for certain.
Okay. We should have.
Yeah.
I have one issue for the city manager.
Okay.
Currently in the city, the biggest hot topic is Jefferson School property in the, in the school board. I know we had a meeting at the church, I never heard anything back on what happened at that meeting. Could you at least keep the council advised as you hear things, what they're going to do, if they're moving forward with that? I didn't know there was a meeting. Somebody walked by, I said, come to the meeting? Oh, my God, I didn't know what the meeting was.
I wasn't aware of the meeting either, so.
Well, yeah, it was a late notice from also, and I never, anybody never told me, Seth probably tell us what happened at the meeting, um, but it's a hot button issue, and I don't know where city council gets involved in this. I think the city has made a statement. I know the prior city manager said, we don't want to park, we're not interested in a park. I think you may have said the state's not interested in a park. I don't know if the council's ever said we're not interested in a park. Um, but anyway, I, I'd like to be kept informed as a council member, if you hear things that's happening tonight, if they've made a decision or making a decision, it'd be kind of nice to know.
Well, interestingly enough, I was on that committee, and I wasn't invited because I don't agree with some of the, the neighborhood people who have yards that are already park-like and, and the size of a park, wanting a private area for them to walk their dogs and convene areas in their homes. And I saw the original plan, and oh, by the way, there was never a promise made. It was a consideration, never a promise.
It was a proposal. A proposal is completely different from a promise.
Exactly. And, and there was also the fact that before it went out, they were looking at housing as another alternative for that site.
Well, there's so many rumors going around. They've made decisions, they're putting home housing in there, the housing commissions. I, I just want to make sure we have, as a council member, the facts. As you know, it would share them with us, would be great.
And, and the, the last proposal that was made from the committee was that it would be single-family homes, 100 square foot of frontage, so, and a minimum of 1,200 square foot.
That's if they make it Jefferson School, correct?
That was, that was the proposal that they made to the land bank as a minimum standard, so that these homes would basically be in, in line with the community itself.
But it's still, it's still in discussion stage. It hasn't been decided yet, correct?
Far as I know. And it was, and that area is actually zoned for multiple family.
Well, what was that issue at the meeting? Is our school, the zoning for that area, it doesn't really mean in the current housing, and maybe we should look at the zoning for that area, but I don't know if we're doing that in conjunction with this project, or we're ignoring that because of that project. I don't even know where we stand in all that, and, and we're all, as this heats up, we're all going to get calls, and I guess it's sitting out where I can hit the ball going.
Well, as soon as I'm off the council, I plan to-
Oh, yeah, give me a shot. Okay.
Right now, Maps owns the property, so it's not really-
Second, we give them another version of what I thought happened.
Just curious to what our zoning allows up there, and is our zoning consistent with what we have in the neighborhood already, and do we need to make a zoning adjustment so if they build houses, we get one? I don't know what they're, right. It just, it's, it's a lot of flux going on, and we should, we should at least be informed of what's happening.
And I haven't had a lot of, it was a contentious issue when we went over it, but, yeah, I can keep council informed of what I know, but-
Do you have the meeting?
I was not, so I don't have, I didn't have anything to share, but I don't have anything to share at this point.
Actually, it still belongs to the school, so the school board's going to have to make a decision on which way they're going to go.
It's a school board decision. I just, yeah, and I think I know which way they're going to go, but I haven't heard what they're going to do yet.
Have you revealed when they're going to tear down that?
It's a decision, I won't.
I, I thought it was going to be August, but I'll, I'll reach out to Ron, because I haven't, yeah, I haven't received an update, and so I'll reach out to Ron about it.
They have that big window out on the side, and you have a lot of parking. The animals are flying in and out of there.
They start third grade this year. I don't think you've got a teacher.
Should be, yeah, boarded up.
That's one of the properties that was-
Or more-
Yeah, we don't need any more parks.
You can't even see their house.
Very der- yeah, it won't matter who he gets. His brother's oversensitive and didn't do well, but, but he'll be fine. He's a great one.
Well, are we adjourning, or?
Does anybody else want to make?
I, I just wanted to ask a question. I, I saw in the paper today that the museum on First Street is evacuating, and I didn't know anything about that. Does anyone know anything about the, the museum on First Street? I just saw them redo the roof. They just redid the entire roof right around 4th of July, and I didn't know what was happening there.
It's city property, and they had told us, I don't know how many months ago, that they weren't going to renew their lease, and it runs till the end of this year. So, that's why they're taking all the items out of the building right now and putting them in different places. That is city property.
And so then we've got a vacant property that will-
Yeah, and that's one we can look at, having, you know, if we're going to have an operator in there or something like that, people talk about it maybe being a distillery or something like, so there's a lot of ideas, and that's something we can discuss what to do next over there. Be a good item for the strategic plan study session.
There you go.
Thank you.
Jermaine, do you have a?
Dylan, do you have any update on all the vandalism? And has it expanded others from the six? Or was it just that six, one day shot, and then?
Um, there are some issues at Sands Park. I had them kind of cover up the graffiti there. Um, we had a lead on someone using a bird scooter, so I was trying to geolocate who used a bird scooter around a tennis court over in that area, so we're trying to follow that. So, there's a couple leads, but I think also our police department are being more vigilant about looking for youth after hours, so.
But we had a half a dozen homes that were also, that was, I was wondering, but so far-
So far, no.
Still under investigation.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Adjourned. We're adjourned. Adjourned.